Yeah, I mean, I guess we do worry about the...
That's where I like starting with. I'm like currently now.
She plays a bat. She brought it.
Since I'm not holding it here.
You're like the dirty dancing thing. You're like the dirty dancer.
When it's my turn, do you want me to read it from here or go up there?
It's better.
I'm going to go up there.
Stomach medicine we're in now.
I always forget to bring it.
The stuff that I brought to our...
You know what? Maybe it was, I brought that.
I can't work all these things.
This is what it is.
I mean, I was like, I'm like, this is, this is out of my control. I get email all day. I have a lot of time. That's maybe, you know, I said, I'm sure. See, it's actually switched over.
I actually think it would be...
I thought you were busy.
Hey, we got it.
All right.
Oh, you have a count?
I think you will.
I can count that.
I'm ready to go.
Oh, tomorrow. Did you get a count?
No. Well, when I was coming up here, I said, can you get a count? Just check.
Because we need that.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if there's a line up there though. That's the only problem. Do you know if, you know if there's people coming in or not?
I know. I know. There's four of us.
I think it's the trick.
Yeah. We don't pay them.
I actually think it would be...
I thought you were busy. Hey, we got it.
All right. Oh, you have a count?
Make sure we have the rest of the thirty.
I think you will. I can count that.
Yeah. I'm ready to go.
Oh, tomorrow. Did you get a count?
No. Well, when I was coming up here, I said, can you get a count? Just check.
Because we need that.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if there's a line up there though. That's the only problem. Do you know if, you know if there's people coming in or not?
I know. I know. There's four of us.
I think it's the trick.
Yeah.
Four, right?
Yeah. Okay.
Looking up on the top.
If this is the... I can never tell. Okay. Just wait for a count. What? Hold on. Yeah, right.
So I'm looking forward to some of those meetings.
Yeah.
So I can mail.
There's no line, right?
No line?
Gents, it looks like this, but it wasn't in my check either. Okay. So we need to go. Yeah.
It's right by the door. It's right by the door. Come in. It's right by the door.
I didn't have one.
A quorum being present, the special, the second half of the annual town meeting will now come to order.
Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the general laws of the town of Granby?
It has.
Select Board Chairman, Mr. Bale will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
The pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sitting onstage tonight is the Finance Board to my left, behind me is the Town Clerk, our Town Attorney, our new Town Administrator, and our Select Board. And sitting in the front at the table is our School Committee. So tonight, we're going to be handling questions and comments a little differently than last meeting. As usual, raise your hand so I can acknowledge you if you'd like to discuss a motion. When I recognize you, please come up to one of the two mics on the floor. There's one right here, and there's one in the back by the bleachers. If you are unable to get to a mic, we do have a mic runner that can come to you. Just please let me know. You must state your name and address before commenting, and you're allowed one question at a time at the mic. Please discuss, direct all your questions or comments to me, and I will direct them to the appropriate individual at Town Meeting. Do not direct an individual at Town Meeting. Now, in your handouts tonight, you have the Finance Committee and Capital Improvement Report. You'll find the warrant articles in that booklet and a short explanation of each article. You have the Annual Report, the Guide to Granby Town Meeting, and an Amendment Worksheet, which explains how to amend a motion. You also have a School 2026, 2026 Budget Handout, and you have the Storm Water Management Bylaw, which we'll be talking about tonight in the Special Town Meeting. If you are going to amend a motion on the floor, you have to have that amendment in writing and ready before you hand it and offer the amendment to the meeting. Lastly, non-residents and voters have to sit in the designated areas in the back of the auditorium unless I have given you permission to sit somewhere else. I also would like to welcome our new Town Administrator, Tammy Martin, as... As well as Emily Reed, our new Town Clerk. And finally, Mark Bale, our newest, yet a repeater, Select Board Member. The moderator will now recognize Select Board Chair, Mr. Bale, for the Annual State of the Town Address.
Before I get started, I'd like to recognize somebody who's been on the Select Board for six years, or had been on the Select Board for six years. Before that, she was, may I say, on the Charter Day Commission. She's a teacher who's had a big impact on her students. One of her students is now in veterinarian school, and she swears that she's there because of Crystal Dufresne. Well, the last time I did this job, I had children, and I think it's even tougher if you're a mom, so... Thanks, Crystal. Two years ago, I'd lost hope in Granby. True story. Some of my best friends had moved away. Granby was no longer the small town I grew up in. My family's been here since 1872. I live on what was once my great-great-grandparents' farm. I'm about as connected to Granby as it gets, but the connection I once felt was gone. I was focused on everything we didn't have. And I began to meet people who hadn't been here very long, people who were making an impact. One of my frie-, new friends is politically active and otherwise active, to an extent I've never seen before in Granby. She serves on all sorts of committees in and out of town, more than I can count, and she's been in Granby for four years. Another person is the president of a volunteer organization, is young, at least by my standards. He's dedicated. He showed, he showed me that the younger generations are interested in more than just living here. They want to be part of and take part in our community. Another person I've met is what might be called an old-fashioned neighbor. He's similarly young and active in town, mose-lawn of his elderly neighbors, one occasion calls for it. He's not afraid to do a favor, but to be honest, I'm even more impressed by the fact he's not afraid to ask for one. I could go on about the people I've known for years. They work with the Boy Scouts and the American Legion, they work in our churches, they volunteer for the GAA. Discovering and rediscovering these personal connections has given me hope, and it should give you hope too. As a town, we do not have money, but we are rich in people, good people. I don't want to give an unrealistic portrayal of our town, however. Whoops. One of my neighbors, to say the least, is problematic. I think all of us would agree that it's rude to go through somebody's trash. I've never caught him at it. I mean, I'm sure he has his reasons, but it only makes things worse that he leaves what he doesn't want scattered across my lawn. And my bird feeders? Forget about it. When I was growing up, we never saw bears. I'm sure they have their uses, at least, but boy, that did not go over well. I gotta work on my delivery, folks, I gotta say. That was a bear joke. Everybody's taking this like, really? All right. I'm, I'm sure the bears have their uses, at least ecologically speaking. Tonight, I'd like to use one as a metaphor, so please bear with me. Thanks. I am a dad and a high school teacher, so you gotta get used to the bad humor. Our situation tonight is best understood as a bear, an angry bear. I don't know if anyone's seen the movie Cocaine Bear. I think it's more or less what it sounds like. An angry bear like that has his back to into a corner, and he's coming at us. One wall of that corner's money, and the other's time, and the bear's coming at us. And you want to talk about how we got here? Bear's still coming. You want to talk about the couldas, the wouldas, the shouldas? The bear's still coming. You want to point fingers? It won't save us because the bear is still coming. You want to talk about how bad the process was? Bear's still coming. Want to talk about what's fair? I think you get the picture. The bear is still coming. Tonight, the bear's town office is in West Street School. Next year, the bear will be back in the form of waste disposal, or the budget, or something else, something that none of us has anticipated yet. There's no pixie dust or easy button tonight or in the future. Our hope for getting out of this corner lies with each of us, each of us reaching out and stepping up. I don't need to tell you Granby doesn't have much money. In fact, I already think I did. The fact is, we're never going to have much money. What we can have is what I call capacity, enough people who know enough to make the right decisions at the right time. We're here tonight, talking tonight about West Street because we lack the capacity to make the right decision at the right time. If the Building Committee had received money to hire professionals at the beginning of their work, the right time, they would have conducted a feasibility study. They would, they would have hired professionals, people who know enough, and the town would have made better decisions. We wouldn't be here today, tonight, a day late and a dollar short. But we did not have enough people who knew enough at the right time to make the right decision. However, if more people do what you've done tonight, involve themselves, we can increase our, increase our capacity. If you reach out to friends and neighbors and involve them, our town will be better for it. You don't have to run for office or join a committee. You can join a volunteer organization. You can show up as you've done tonight at Town Meeting, at fundraisers, at school and church events. Just involve yourselves. Our Select Board and our Town Administrator are dedicated to involving more people in town. We'll be overhauling our town website in the near future, and we will appoint a Communications Committee, and we have plans to involve you. It's going to take a while to work out the logistics, but we want you to be involved. Now, a lot of you came here tonight to vote, and many of you have strong feelings about Town Off-, Town Offices and West Street School. But also, you came out of here, came out here with a sense of responsibility. Tonight, you became members of Town Meeting, part of our government. Technically speaking, you're the legislative branch of our town government. The articles tonight are legislation. Tonight, we're going to discuss West Street, and your patience will be sorely tested. Whatever happens, most of us will leave here frustrated. I think West Street is our only alternative, given the eighteen-month deadline and our limited budget, but even then, I don't know exactly what we'll get for our money. We're backed into a corner, and as I've said, the bear's still coming. When you cast your vote, make what you think is the best decision. It's part of the responsibility accepted in coming here. The Finance Committee will give you specifics about another corner we're now being backed into. In the last year, that bear's gotten much closer and more angry. Please give them your attention and respect. Theirs is the most thankless job in town, and most of them have been doing it for decades.
So it is now 7:15, so the moderator calls for a motion to recess the annual town meeting and called to order the Special Town Meeting. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed?
All right, I think I have everything.
So a quorum being present, the Special Town Meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the general laws of the town of Granby?
In house.
In the interest of transparency, I would like to remind Town Meeting to know that I am the chairperson of the West Street Building Committee. I have checked with Town Council, and there are not any conflicts for me to moderate this meeting. I am confident in my abilities that I will be able to moderate in a fair and impartial manner regardless of my membership on the committee. Thank you. The moderator will now recognize Chief Anderson to present the motion under Article One. You have to turn it on.
Madam Moderator, not everybody's received Special Town Meeting. But it was put on the article.
Not everybody has the Special Town Meeting. It would be in your...
She's got, she's passing on.
If you don't, if you don't have one, please raise your hand so we can hand it out to you.
Check one, two. Check, check.
Okay. Good evening. So the town to vote to transfer from General Purpose Stabilization Fund, the sum of $24,932.34, for the purpose of paying prior-year bills for the Fire and Ambulance Department.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
As far as an explanation goes on this, part of my charge coming back here was to go back through some of our old records, assess outstanding bills. There was approximately twenty-five outstanding bills for this total that went from 2020 through 2024 for various vendors, various reasons. So this brings everything current at this point.
Are there any questions?
Crystal Dufresne, 11 Taylor Street.
I don't think it's on, Crystal.
I think it was on.
It is on?
Just speak right into it.
Crystal Dufresne, 11 Taylor Street? Okay.
So just a question. Ambulance has its own fund. Is there a reason why it's not coming from that fund, and it's coming from Purpose Stabilization Fund, the general fund?
I don't, I don't have that answer. Chris had set that up. It's a mix of both ambulance and fire calls. That could be why. There was somebody else.
If I can find it in my papers here. Kathy gave it to me. Oh, hers.
Do they have the address? I honestly don't know all these. Is it just a list of the... It's a list of bills, you know?
Yeah, I got the, I have the list, but she's asking why didn't you have ambulance funds, like receipts?
Because it's prior year.
They don't. See, some are ambulance, some are fire-related vendors. That's, that's, I guess I have to... Was there somebody else that had a question?
Name and address, please.
L. Vandermark, 280 Bachelor Street. What measures are being taken to ensure these oversights don't happen in the future?
Basic accounting. I, I don't know why these bills got missed. You know, they go through a process, you know, like any business or any, your home, a bill comes in, you pay it. We've been cleaning those up. We found these, vendors reached out to us, some that had been outstanding, trying and got no response. I, I don't have a, a good reason for why they weren't, but I can tell you, moving forward, it goes through the normal process. A bill comes in, gets forwarded to the, the town for payment on a warrant, and they've been paid. It's usually a thirty-day cycle.
I'll have Mr. Bale answer you also.
Thank you.
I'll, I'm going to explain the process, and then I'll let you draw your own conclusions, if that makes sense. What happens is bills come in, they come into the head of a department. In this case, they would come into the chief. It's the chief's responsibility to bring those bills, send them to the proper people within our financial system, and we're lucky now to have Russ Anderson, who was our chief for many years, who is now cleaning up the messes that were left behind. It won't happen again because the person who is most responsible is no longer with us.
Thank you.
I can say too that there's, since COVID, some of the, some of the process, you may have even seen it at home, is some of your bills start coming via email versus in the mail. And when, when it's busy, you know, you might have your mail that comes to your phone, you see it, you go back to doing it, and it's in, and if you didn't put it in a file and manage yourself to discipline those, they can get lost pretty quick, but it's still not an excuse.
Any other questions? Mr. Randall, do you want a mic to come to you?
Okay, I can speak loud. The fact of the matter is...
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Maybe I need that mic down.
We're giving a mic to you.
Madam Moderator, the fact of the matter is, is that the town has incurred these bills, and we, we need to pay it. It's my understanding that the vote has to pass by a nine-tenth margin. I think I'm correct on that.
Yes.
Accordingly, I call the question.
So unless anybody else has something different to say, he's asked to call the question. It's a little early to call the question. I know it has to be paid, but we have people still, so I'm going to hold out on that.
Terry LeJoy, 160 School Street. I believe Crystal had a question, and I don't think that was answered yet, as far as it being between the Fire Department and the ambulance, and the ambulance having its own source of funds. Crystal?
Excuse me, Terry, don't, don't call out somebody at Town Meeting, please.
This Town Meeting warrant was prepared by our interim Town Administrator, who is not interim anymore, so we don't know exactly why, why it's written that way, and I don't think there's anybody up here who can answer that question.
Go ahead. Is it on now?
Jennifer Bartos, 97 Porter Street. How confident are we that everything is cleaned up at this point, and were there any interest charges or late fees that are part of this, or do we know?
Not that, so as far as late fees and charges, there's not, the bills are the bills that we've, we've settled on, we've notified them that we can't, you know, we can't pay that money because it's from a past fiscal year. So until we had Town Meeting approval, we couldn't pay them. So they're all kind of in, sitting in limbo, and they understand. What was the first question?
How confident are we that it's settled?
You know, I went back through as many vendors as I could and see for outstanding, and we found stuff that had never been brought forward for two or three years, so... It's like anything, you know, does someone call, come out of the woodwork? We don't know, but we think we got, we hope we got it, so...
All right. In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a nine-tenth majority, and I am required by law to count it. So can I have the counters, please? All those in favor of the motion under Article One, please raise your cards. Are you set? Okay, thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. The motion passes by a nine-tenth majority, 125 for, two against. The moderator will now call on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article Two.
Me? Sure, you don't mean Glenn?
I have the...
What's Article Two? I don't have Article Two. I don't know what Article Two is.
You should have the special, the special one.
Twenty-two?
No, the Special Town Meeting.
Oh, you can get a copy. Probably hook me up.
I'll keep you on.
Is this the West Street thing? All right.
And you can, you can read from there, Mark.
You know, they go through a process, like any business or any, your home, a bill comes in, you pay it. We've been cleaning those up. We found these. Vendors reached out to us. Some had been outstanding, trying and got no response. I don't have a good reason for why they weren't. But I can tell you, moving forward, it goes through the normal process. A bill comes in, gets forwarded to the town for payment on a warrant, and they've been paid. It's usually a 30-day cycle.
I'll have Mr. Bale answer you also.
Thank you.
I'll, I'm gonna explain the process and then I'll let you draw your own conclusions, if that makes sense. What happens is bills come in, they come into the head of a department. In this case, they would come into the chief. It's the chief's responsibility to bring those bills, send them to the proper people within our financial system. And we're lucky now to have Russ Anderson, who was our chief for many years, who is now cleaning up the messes that were left behind. It won't happen again because the person who is most responsible is no longer with us.
Thank you.
I can say too that there's, since COVID, some of the, some of the process, you may even have seen it at home, that some of your bills start coming via email versus in the mail. And when it's busy, you know, you might have your mail that comes to your phone, you see it, you go back to doing it and it's in. And if you didn't put it in a file and manage yourself to discipline those, they can get lost pretty quick. But it's still not an excuse.
Any other questions? Mr. Randall, do you want a mic to come to you? Can you state your name and address for the record? We're giving a mic to you.
Madam Moderator, the fact of the matter is, is that the town has incurred these bills and we need to pay it. It's my understanding that the vote has to pass by a nine-tenth margin. I think I'm correct on that.
Yes.
Accordingly, I call the question.
So unless anybody else has something different to say, he's asked to call the question. It's a little early to call the question. I know it has to be paid, but we have people still, so I'm gonna hold out on that.
Terry Lejoy, 160 School Street. I believe Crystal had a question, and I don't think that was answered yet. As far as it being between the fire department and the ambulance, and the ambulance having its own source of funds. Crystal?
Excuse me, Terry. Don't, don't call out somebody at town meeting, please.
This town meeting warrant was prepared by our interim town administrator, who is not interim anymore. So we don't know exactly why, why it's written that way. And I don't think there's anybody up here who can answer that question.
Go ahead. Is it on now?
Jennifer Bartos, 97 Porter Street. How confident are we that everything is cleaned up at this point? And were there any interest charges or late fees that are part of this? Or do we know?
Not that, so as far as late fees and charges, there's not, the bills are the bills that we've settled on. We've notified them that we can't, you know, we can't pay that money because it's from a past fiscal year. So until we had town meeting approval, we couldn't pay them. So they're all kind of sitting in limbo and they understand. What was the first question?
How confident are we that it's settled?
You know, I went back through as many vendors as I could and see for outstanding, and we found stuff that had never been brought forward for two or three years. So it's like anything, you know, does someone call, come out of the woodwork? We don't know. We think we got, we hope we got it.
All right. In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by nine-tenths majority, and I am required by law to count it. So can I have the counters, please? All those in favor of the motion under Article One, please raise your cards. Are you set? Okay, thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. The motion passes by nine-tenths majority, 125 for, two against. The moderator will now call on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article Two. And you can read from there, Mark.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account number 011925829, ART. Special town meeting, April 8th, 2025. Number two, West Street Building remediation slash demolition, the sum of $3 million into the account number 011925821, ART. Special town meeting, December 11th, 2023. Number one, West Street Building renovation.
Can I have a second? And now I'll open the floor for discussion. Do you want to talk?
Don't hold your breath. This is gonna be a long one. All right. Tonight, the select board is asking you to vote to transfer money from the demolition account back into the West Street Building renovation account. A little while ago, I commended you for taking responsibility for showing up tonight. Now I'm asking you to accept responsibility for your decision on this article. I'm not asking you to agree with us. I'm asking you to set aside your emotions, your frustrations with the process, and vote for what you think is the best course of action for the town. Unfortunately, the West Street building has become entangled with multiple town meeting votes, an unwelcome override vote that few of us actually understood. If you're unhappy, you're not alone. These few months have not been Granby at its best. I can tell you, I've had three weeks to figure out this entire process, identify the options, and provide as much information as I could to everyone who asked. Let me tell you, I'm not happy either. At town meeting last month, I didn't vote in favor of the West Street projects. In fact, I didn't vote at all. I didn't have enough information. The week before I was elected, the building committee pressed me on my support for the project, and I refused to commit. By the election, I was, I had enough information to vote for the override. I thought West Street was a good alternative, and I particularly liked the idea of adding a usable gym to our town. At the end of May, I realized, given the constraints of time and money, there was no good alternative to using West Street for town offices. I've been on the job since May 20th, and I've been playing catch-up ever since. I've met with our former town administrator, our project manager, and members of the building committee. I've exchanged messages with citizens who had some creative ideas to solve our town offices problem. In fact, I even received one this morning. I've watched meetings on G-CAM and read reports. I've made Facebook posts, read and responded to comments, and even recorded, I'm afraid or ashamed to admit, a few videos. It was not pretty. I have a good idea of how and why we ended up here tonight, but honestly, it doesn't really matter. The woulds, the coulds, and the shoulds don't matter. We're here now, and we have a decision to make. What matters now is that you understand what's at stake and that you have as much information as possible before you cast your vote. I still wish I knew more about our future. I wish I knew more about how the West Street project would turn out. I wish I knew what we would do if this article didn't pass. But tonight, the buck stops here, and it stops with you and me and the other elected officials here tonight. Now bear in mind, there are two things we can't change: money and time. Can't change the past. Our future options are limited, and we have 18 months left on our final lease of the Town Hall annex. Every day, costs are going up, and every day, our money buys less. So there are a few factors you need to take into consideration tonight. First one, demolition. Demolition is a major barrier to new construction and modular buildings. Costs for the necessary abatement, demolition, and restoration of the West Street site have tripled since 2018. In 2018, the estimate for demolition was $890,000. In 2023, the estimate was $1.2 million. Our most recent estimate was last Wednesday. It was nearly $3 million. Demolition buys us a $3 million hole in the ground. It's a $3 million surcharge on anything but renovation. Spending money on demolition brings us closer to the day that we need an override and increases the amount of money we would need for an override. Demolition means we have less money for our schools and less money for town services. Another factor is building costs. When I began my research, I thought new construction, municipal, not home construction, was about $650 per square foot. At informational meetings, some people scoffed at the idea that construction of a town building could cost $1,000 per square foot. So here are the costs per square foot of three local projects. Chootsbury, $1,200 per square foot for its library. Greenfield, $900 per square foot for a fire station. Hadley's DPW Garage, $800 to $850 per square foot. The cost of 10,000 square feet of new construction would far exceed the 5.6 million we're asking for tonight. Add soft costs in and a $3 million premium for demolition, and we're deep into override territory. Modular buildings are another suggestion. Recently, our OPM did a project for 10,000 square feet of portable classrooms in Tingsborough. The cost was $500 a square foot. Add the cost of demolishing West Street to that, and we're about $2 million above renovations for West Street. And there's no reason to assume that by the time we started to receive bids, the cost would be more than 500, the cost would be only $500 per square foot. And these portable classrooms, they don't last long. They're high qua, there are higher-quality modular buildings, but their turnaround exceeds our timeline. Other alternatives. People have suggested alternatives. Some people who, some of whom say that our retirees couldn't afford a tax increase have suggested we close our Council on Aging and use it for office space and send our seniors to South Hadley. Others have suggested putting town office, the town office isn't our library. Nobody uses it anyway, they said. Clearly, they haven't been to the library, which sees 100 to 200 patrons a day. Yet another suggestion was using Granby High School for town offices. I took this suggestion seriously, though as a high school teacher, I doubted it would work. Since Columbine, we take school security very seriously. The only place in the high school we could even consider citing town offices is the industrial arts wing behind the kitchen. That's where we house Granby to go, a program that sends food home to students who would otherwise go hungry. Anyway, with, as due diligence, I had the building inspector check the space out. Using it for office space would change the area from school use to mixed use, triggering code upgrades. Aside from the build-out for offices, we'd have to abate the space, make it handicap accessible, and add sprinklers for fire suppression. The building also happens to be under the authority of the public schools, not the select board, not town meeting, and they don't support the idea. Another suggestion was that we raise West Street, sell the land to a developer who would build in town offices, which we would then buy back or lease. Cost savings would come from not paying the prevailing wage. The state did this for Belzer Town and the Northampton Courthouses. Why not us? Aside from the fact that we don't have the time, we don't have the expertise or the sophistication. The Division of the Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, DCAM, is Massachusetts Department in charging, in charge of managing, planning, design, and construction of leasing states' facilities. It has 135 employees. Not all of them work on developing property to lease, but it's safe to say they have more people working on that than Granby does. We spent three years addressing West Street and town offices. Is there anyone here who really thinks we have what it takes to pull off a project of this sophistication in 18 months? If we had more money and more time, we might have other alternatives. In our post-pandemic world, however, things are different. You don't need to tell, I don't need, you don't need me to tell you that prices have increased. According to the National Association of Home Builders, the cost of building materials has increased 34% since 2020. Recent tariffs are also driving up construction costs. When it comes to the amount of money we have to spend and the time we have to do something, West Street is the best solution to replacing the Town Hall annex. That's why we're bringing it forward tonight. West Street solves the greatest number of our problems. It's the cheapest alternative, and it fits our timeline. West Street consolidates our town offices in one place and saves on operational costs. We don't throw $3 million down a hole. It meets our 18-month deadline. We also have the chance to renovate the rest of the building later. One example of this is we are in, let me just state this because I do not want to oversell this possibility. We are in extremely preliminary talks about citing a regional dispatch at West Street School. This is, it's not a done deal. It's not even a deal. But it gives you an idea of what we have for a building's potential, that it can be used, and it can be used for good purposes, might even be grants involved. Finally, we save the money we've already spent, and it's not wasted. If you vote yes tonight, this is what will happen. The architect will complete the design work and determine what we can get for the amount of money we have appropriated. During construction, they will use value engineering to control costs. Could mean fewer windows, fewer partitions in the classrooms, fewer rooms if necessary, no bells, no whistles, just enough space to house our town offices. We're past the point where anyone is going to walk out of here feeling good with what happens tonight. We're past the point of what-ifs. We're past the point of affordable alternatives that don't involve throwing $3 million down a hole. Anything other than renovating West Street blows a hole in our finances and severely risks blowing our deadline. If we vote no tonight, a few things will happen. Our building committee will resign. They've been used, abused, accused, and thrown under the bus. They are not going to pursue another project. We will have to appoint a new committee. We will have to have at least one more town meeting to appropriate funds for the new, a new project. The new committee will have to send out requests for proposals to hire a new project manager and hire another design team. The design team will design whatever fits our budget. They'll send out bids, we'll hire the appropriate contractors, and after that, site preparation and construction will begin. I have serious doubts that we can do that in 18 months. We're backed into a corner. We have no clear alternatives that fit our 18-month deadline and our budget. Select Board will do its best regardless of what happens tonight. We may be housing our offices in trailers that you see on construction sites, and, but given our record with temporary solutions to long-term problems, we might inhabit those until they're falling apart, and we find ourselves at another town meeting like this.
Mr. Labera.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm John Labera, speaking for the Finance Committee. Very briefly, the Finance Committee votes, recommends that you vote in favor of this project. And here are a couple of reasons why. When this project started some time ago, there was an exciting idea. Let's find a way to get the town offices all together so we have one spot doing business with the town. There was $5.6 million, various sources, that was allocated to this project, and an excellent committee was put together to figure out how to do this. Except that, the committee was not given the charge to do this for $5.6 million. They were basically given a charge to figure out how to get all the town offices into the space over at West Street School, recognizing they weren't going to use the entire building, probably half of it. But when they went to work and started to figure out how to do this, they discovered that what we had originally been told as estimates for what was needed to be done to the school was not quite accurate. As they dug more and more into it, they found that it could not be done for the idea of what town offices ought to be for the $5.6 million. So they came up with a project that we rejected at the last town meeting, and the Finance Committee, among others, voted that we reject it. But now, they're back to what the original project is, and it's very refreshing to think of this. A committee has said, here's $5.6 million. Tell us what you can do with it. Don't tell us how to build a building. Don't tell us how to set up processes that create a much bigger space than we might need. Don't tell us how to make these things very luxurious. None of that. The only thing that we're told is, say, here's $5.6 million. Figure out how we can put the town offices in this building. So that's what this next project is. That is, I think, almost a first for Granby, to say, here's the amount of money. Do what you can with this money. Don't come back looking for more. But at any rate, we're back to the original idea of, we'd like to get the town offices together, and we'd like to do it for $5.6 million. Tell us how to do that, and then they'll present an idea to the select board. The select board will then have the final vote on it. But for tonight, we recommend that you vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Jen?
Every time I sit up here, I provide comic relief for all of you, so I apologize as I fight with the microphone. Jennifer Bartos, speaking on behalf of the school committee. Regarding the West Streets project, although the school department and the school committee weren't necessarily pleased with the way the funds were taken that had been voted on and earmarked for a future project for improvements to the gym and locker room at the high school, we do understand the need for town offices. A renovation project that stays within the published budget makes fiscal sense, more so than spending money to demolish the building. That will only leave us with a very large and expensive hole and no offices. And this is, again, where I'll provide some levity. I hope that if by some miracle this project comes in under budget, that the schools could be made whole and some of that money transferred back so we can have it in reserve to work towards that project. So again, we're for voting for this.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seamus, come on down to a mic, please.
Seamus Connolly, 21 Ferry Hill Road, Granby. If this project were to pass, when would the building be operational, like fully operational for the offices?
18 months.
Okay, that seems, that seems very fair. I'm really not sure how, I'm really not sure how I'm gonna comment on this, but I think, you know, I think I'm starting to have some, some second thoughts on this. I just hope, I just hope we have enough money, you know, left over for the schools. And if we do vote yes on this, and if it does pass, I'll donate some money to the schools.
Mr. Damaraki, come on up to a mic, please.
Rich Damaraki, Bachelor Street. How many times will the select board realize that Granby residents do not want to renovate West Street School? We voted on it once. We voted it down. We voted a second time to transfer money into a demolition account. We had an election. We voted no. There are too many unknowns about the school. The basement is full of water, full of water. I think the architect said at the last meeting, the most expensive method would cost over $1 million, just to fix that one problem. Now, I don't blame the committee. I think the committee did a fantastic job. I blame the select board. The select board refused to give a charge that included that the committee look at the entire buildings in Granby to look, to increase the scope of the project. They refused to look at other locations. So I would ask everybody to vote no on this project. The the chairman of the select board brought up 15 or 20 questions. Those questions should be answered by the new committee. We need people on a committee that looks at the entire buildings available for use, not just the West Street School. You know they're gonna come back and ask for more money. Everybody knows it. They're gonna come back and ask for more money. It's a, don't throw good money after bad money. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Alright, so the select board. So, Rich, just give you a little background on this. So this started some time ago, and the responsibility of the select board is to find a solution for the town offices. So when this was brought up, we had a group of people that came in, Concerned Citizens, and the West Street building was an option. When we look at the town, we look at what the town owns for property, as far as land and building, and what's accessible for us. There's not many options. One of the options was currently the West Street building. So when that came up, that was something that was, the committee was charged with to look at it. So that was brought forward, was the, what they felt at the time, they brought us to the select board, three different options. So we thought, what was the So we thought, what was the best option, to bring forward to the town, let the town, a town meeting vote on it. Let them decide what they feel is best for the town. It was a great, you know, building. There's a lot of good things that were going to be put in there, but with that, it came an expensive price tag, there's, there's no doubt about that. The town had their chance, they heard about it, they didn't like, like the amount of money, and they voted it down, which is fine, that, I mean, that, that's how things go. And then, you know, then I hear people complaining that the Select Board now is trying to push it through when they put it on the, to be voted on, on the town election. Well, that case was just if, if they wanted to consider an override for that. That's what that was for. So we're, we're back here in front of the, the town right now asking for this, because we don't have options right now. We, in 18 months, we don't have a place for our town offices, unless we put them inside the, the current senior center or the library. And again, that is a part-time solution to a long-time problem that we have. This has been going on for two years, the Select Board has been discussing this. This is nothing new. They've looked at different options, people have brought different things forward. We had Select Board members look at options as far as, what they can do as, as far as building, you know, the temporary things and bring trailers in and stuff like that. It just wasn't cost-effective. So to sit there, and, and I take offense to it, that someone that sits there in so many different meetings with the other Select Board members, and, and trying to look at a solution to a problem the town has, we don't have all the answers, but that's why we bring up solutions that we feel will, will benefit the town and let the towns' folks vote on it. This, this problem doesn't go away. So even if the town votes tonight and says, no, we don't want to do that, it doesn't go away. The Select Board still has to come up with a solution somehow, some way, because that's what we're tasked for, as, as select officials in the town. So, I mean, to say that the Select Board hasn't been doing, or trying to keep on pushing this through, no. The Select Board is trying to bring up options for the town folks to hear about, and what we need to move forward and have office space for our town officials. Thank you.
Go ahead, Anthony.
Anthony Serini, Three Seater Drive. I just want to put some of this in perspective, not to have a, a long history of how we spent money and why we spent money. In 2008, we bonded through town meeting to put in a roof on that building. That was $1.135 million. We're still paying that bond. We have to pay that, another $160,000, give or take, since this, this has been going on, to pay off that bond. If we decide to demolish the building, we're basically throwing away $1.135 million. We're going to have to come up with $160,000 to pay off the bond prematurely, and then $3 million, well, that's going to be included in the $3 million to demolish the building. We've insured that building for rough figures, $23,000 to $26,000 a year. That's over $400,000. $414,000 if we paid $23,000 a year for insurance. So now, the cost that we've had invested into that building, just for the roof and insurance, is $1.549 million. Considering the amount of money that we've already expended for the OPM and the architect, along with removing the oil tank, which we would have to do anyways, is around $300,000. So now, we're up to approximately $1.9 million. If we demolish the building, we're basically taking $1.9 plus, we've, we've heated the building, we've done some maintenance, minimal maintenance over the course of the past 17, 18 years. We're just going to, like Mark says, have a $3 million hole, but add in another $2 million that we've already spent. So we're going to be throwing away $2 million, along with demolishing a building for three. I vote that we transfer the money back and not demolish the building.
Thank you. Come on forward, Mr. Matthews.
John Matthew, 288 Taylor Street. First thing I see is very, very disappointed that there's 127 residents and voters and taxpayers who came to this meeting. The last meeting we had, we had over 250, and the vote was against it. Whether or not it was for or against, 250. And I heard, I heard comments from people that 250 wasn't representative, and we weren't going to let 250 people tell 6,000 people how to, how to do things. That was wrong, because tonight, you got 127, half that amount. That's discouraging, and I hope that 125 that didn't show up weren't discouraged by the Select Board nullifying that no vote. I hope it wasn't that. But here's my comments. The cost of new building, I've heard the Select Board say that Greenfield, Shrewsbury, and South Hadley had outrageous costs per square foot, 800, 900, 1,200. My question, did the Select Board talk to actual builders and get estimates? Because I did. I talked to two builders in Western Mass, and they said $650 a square foot was doable, prevailing wage included. I'd like to have someone respond to that. Did they actually talk to builders?
Okay.
I spent about every waking moment I could getting up to speed on this. I didn't have time to call Shrewsbury, Greenfield, or, who the heck was it, Hadley. We spoke with our OPM, and I trust our OPM. If I could just address for a minute this idea about town meeting. It's tempting to think that town meeting is the voice of the people, it's not. Not any more so than the Select Board or the Planning Board of the School Committee. The difference between town meeting and the Select Board is that town meeting members are self-appointed. Tonight, we all represent Granby, not just the Select Board, not just town meeting, all of us. As I said earlier, town meeting is a legislative branch of town government. The Select Board is the executive branch, and we're co-equal, but we have different powers and we have different authorities. Our form of democracy goes back 300 years. It was designed with a system of checks and balances, and we're here today discussing West Street and the town offices tonight because of this system. Town meeting is a feature. Tonight's meeting is a feature, not a bug of democracy. It's not fun, but tonight's meeting is a check and balance of both the Select Board and the town meeting. Recently, I referred to the article, which we're actually discussing right now, that transferred money to demolition fund. I won't say what words I used, but I was not complimentary of this article, I stand by that. Here's why I think this article was bad, it shouldn't have been presented to town meeting at all, and it, guess what, it was presented by the Select Board, it wasn't presented by town meeting. The article was unnecessary. We didn't need to vote on demolition last month. We could have voted on it at a special town meeting, we could have voted on it at a later date this year, we could have voted on it next June, there was no rush. Big decisions are best made without introducing unnecessary factors, voting on an override is a big decision. Demolition was a distraction. By the time we voted on that article, emotions were running high from the frustrated override vote. It was not the best time to make a decision. At that time, we had no idea how much the cost of demolition was, we had no idea how it would affect, would affect our fiscal circumstances. The demolition article was then amended, which confused an already confused town meeting. At no point was there a serious discussion of what that article meant to the town. This town article is a check on town meeting's decision to transfer the money to a demolition fund. It's also a check on the Select Board's proposal to renovate West Street. We're here tonight for the right reason. People show up, they self-appoint themselves, there was no attempt, this was discussed as much as I could possibly discuss it. I was on, I've been on Facebook for as many hours as I could possibly take. I was on there for answering questions, I've been receiving questions, I've been receiving alternatives, I got one this morning, I even wrote up a brief on it, so I had answers for that. I made these stupid videos, which I look really bad in, but we did what we could. Town meeting, every time town meeting convenes, it's a new town meeting. If people don't show up, they don't show up.
Excuse me?
Wait, Mr. Edwards, if someone else has a question first, because you already have been at the mic, so you have to take a rest before you come back, one comment at a time. Come on down.
Lisa Petralia, 6 Common Street. Mark, it would be good if you could answer John Matthews' question of, did you speak to contractors? But my question is, I believe in the past, citizens have turned out to vote for articles to appropriate money into funds, and sometimes those funds never get used or don't get used for the purposes for which they were originally presented. The fact that on April the 8th, at special town meeting, after Article 1 failed by 2/3rd majority to do the $15 million project, thus asking taxpayers for another $8 million, and the Finance Committee throwing in $2 million of taxpayer money that's been in the accounts, we went to Article 2, and I do believe the Select Board at the time knew what the demolition costs were. They were quoted of about 2.5, so they rounded it to 3, and that's why it's sitting in the fund, and tonight, we might vote to move that back to the West Street Building Committee. If the Article 2 fails tonight, is it a given that West Street School will be demolished?
I thought I answered John's question, no. I, I don't even remember when I found out. We spoke with the OPM on Monday?
Thursday.
Thursday. You know, there's a limit to my due diligence, let's put it that way. I don't have time to call up three different towns to confirm what I already trust, as the facts and figures from our OPM that's actually doing the projects. So, no, I did not call those people up. What was the second thing?
Is it going to be demolition if this doesn't pass?
There's no guarantee that that will happen. Our job is to do what's best for the town, it's not to do town meetings well. I tried to explain that a minute ago. We're, we're hired to do what's best, and statute, Massachusetts law, gives us the authority over buildings. Okay? Politically, people can put pressure on us, but our responsibility is to take care of our buildings and to take care of our people. It's not necessarily to do what town meeting wants. This is what I'm talking about with the checks and balances. The town meeting voted for that once. Town meeting is here again today. Self-appointed people are here today, self-appointed people were there yesterday. But no, there's no guarantee that we'll, we'll tear it down right away. We're paying, right now, because it's vacant, we pay $28,000 in, pay $28,000 a year in insurance, it would be cheaper if we were actually, people were in the building. That cost is going up by 13% or 14% a year. My meager math skills tell me that it'll be double that, it'll be over $50,000 in five years, so that'll keep going up. We're not, we don't want to keep the building vacant, but we also don't demolish it, I don't, I don't agree with demolishing it, and I'm not, I'm not going to vote to demolish it unless it makes some kind of sense. We don't have any place to put our town offices, there are no places in town to put our town offices. I wish there were, I wish the process were different. I wish things had come out differently, but this is what we got. This is our only decision, as far as I can tell, only choice. I, you know, everybody can call up a contractor and find out what they say. I've got hard numbers from somebody I trust, and that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Come on up.
Mary Ann Munger from 12 Smith Avenue. In the last town meeting, when we voted on this article, I asked a question, I asked, it was explained that if we voted to move this money into this demolition fund, that we could, that the town would able to, be able to move it back or to another place at another time. And so the question was, well, why would we move it now? And Mr. Libera explained it was to give flexibility to the Select Board. So if the Select Board now believes that the best thing is to move it back to the West Street Fund, then I think we should move it back. And originally, we had the $5.6 million for the renovation, and it was approved by the town. And now, we're sort of back to that same place where the vast majority of, of the people voted yes, let's go forward and do this.
Thank you. Crystal, come on up, and then I'll have you come up.
So I know I just want, Crystal Dufry, 11 Taylor Street. I just wanted to comment. So the previous Select Board, in December of 2023, we had the special town meeting, we agreed, all of us who was here, at the $5.6 million to renovate West Street, West Street building. The committee was tasked with the $5.6 million, so I just want to clarify that, because that seems to be a confusion here tonight. They came to us in February of 2025, after looking into all the costs and said, it's going to be more than that, it's going to be $15 million. Two out of three of the Select Board members said, it's too much. People aren't going to say yes, but let's go with the highest package, we'll give them their choice. So again, just clarifying, the charge was $5.6 million. And two of the, two of the three Select Board members voted no at that meeting, because that was not the charge. But we did our job, we brought it to town meeting. It's not what we want necessarily, it's what the people want. So I just want to clarify that. And as far as the demolition, Mark is right, the Select Board does have the authority to do what they want with the building, but town meeting appropriates those funds. So they can choose what they want to do, but it ends with you. If you say no, they can't do it. So I just want to clarify that. It's your money.
I'll have you come up next, after Terri.
Terri Lejoy, 160 School Street. I just want to clarify, the, it is a cap of $5.6 million, and it is to do what section of the building, and what are the employees that will move into that section? And it's only that section that's going to be done with the $5.6?
Thanks for an easy question. For those of, for those of us who went to West Street School, it's the kindergarten and first grade wing, and then it'll be sealed off, so we won't access the rest of the building, because it won't be abated. All the town offices will go in there. In terms of the budget, we haven't talked about it yet, but there's something called value engineering, and what that means is, instead of increasing costs, you basically eliminate things. That's when I was talking about the no bells and the no whistles type of thing. So, and this is why we still need our design team basically to do a little bit more work so we know actually what we can get and go out to bid, but the whole idea is to come in for underneath that, and I know everybody's going to say, oh, it's never going to happen, but it's going to be a matter of eliminating features that we can do without, rather than to increase money.
And then, what offices are going in there? She asked.
Which offices?
What offices will be going in there? She asked.
Do you want a list of all the town offices?
Well, yes, because the last, the last plans were to put the senior center in there plus...
The senior center will not be in there.
So is the senior center staying where they are now?
Senior center would say, yeah. That option was, I think, Option A or B, and that would have included the cafeteria and the three rooms on the other side of the building, as well as the administrative offices.
Okay, and you're not going around the whole building, putting all the same windows? You're just doing the windows?
We don't have the money for that. We don't have the money for that.
Okay. And I have one other, are you going to close the hallway?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Come on up.
You'll have to forgive me, I'm vertically challenged. You know? After hearing all the information...
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Wayne Healy, 174 West State Street, Granby. I have been a lifelong resident of Granby. I went to high school here, I graduated, I went to the grammar school, the whole bit. My parents moved here in the late, in the early, the late 50s, and built their home here, because this was a good town, and everybody worked together to make sound movements. As much as I've heard this evening, to me, it makes common sense to use a building that exists, that needs a little fixing up, than to build a whole new building, which is going to cost you a lot more money per square foot. And that will surely raise your taxes. Right? The other thing I was astonished at, you know, I follow the Facebook page and that. I was astonished at the comments people made about the senior citizens of this town. Well, go to Granby, go to Belcher Town, go here, go there. Those senior citizens lived in this town a lot, a lifelong, period. They paid their taxes, they voted on moving forward, they did all the things that we, as children and adolescents, took advantage of and appreciated. I find it awful that you would basically kick the seniors out the door. You know? I understand the cost of renovation and including the seniors, but I also don't understand the lack of compassion and understanding for seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Dave DeRozier, 32 Bagcell Road. I just wanted to address procurement. Everybody's hammering the Select Board for not contacting contractors, but that isn't the way it works. Municipalities can't just give it to contractor X, Y, or Z, because he says he can do it cheaper. We have to hire an architect, we have to hire an OPM, they have to prepare the specs, it goes out to bid, formally bid, and we have to take the low bidder. So, we're arguing about a moot point here, let's just move the question.
Do I have a second to move the question? I need a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards.
We only need a simple majority.
To move the question?
The transfer. Oh.
To move the question, it's two-thirds. Thank you. All those opposed? So the question is going to be moved? No, no, you're voting on to, to move the question. So now we're going to vote, actually, on the motion under Article 2. In order for the motion to pass, it has to pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article 3.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account number 011925828 for annual town meeting on May 13th, 2025, number 17. The cemetery paving the sum of $37,500 for the purpose of paving the driveway at 215 West State Street in lieu of rent for the period July 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2026.
Second? And any discussion? All right, in order for the motion under Article 3 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator now calls for a motion to dissolve the special town meeting and call to order the annual town meeting. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, I have a majority. The moderator will now call on Ms. Bartosz to present her school committee report.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Moderator, for allowing me these few minutes to speak on behalf of the Granby School Committee regarding Granby Public Schools. First, we would like to welcome our new town administrator, Tammy Martin. We are excited to begin working with you and are looking forward to building a strong working relationship. As you all know, the only constant in life is change. Education is changing, students' needs are changing. As this educational landscape continues to shift, public education is becoming more competitive, with charter schools and school choice options that continue to draw students away from Granby Public Schools with more options and programs. Even though students may no longer attend Granby Schools, we are still fiscally responsible for them if they are town residents. Special education costs are rising, transportation costs keep increasing, and we are obligated to pay these increase, increases. These two factors are largely beyond our local control. Over time, managing these cost increases is becoming increasingly difficult to meet the demands of current academic standards, let alone position ourselves to meet future requirements. The reality is, we are being asked to do more with less in a time when our students need more support than ever. Meanwhile, in order to balance our budget, we are forced to reduce programs and services. This vicious cycle, if left unchecked, makes our schools less attractive to current and prospective families and undermines our ability to offer the scope of learning opportunities our students deserve. To be clear, the school committee understands and respects the budget constraints of our town. These challenges are not unique to us, as evidenced by the issues plaguing many towns around us, but that does not make them any easier to bear. Despite near constant reductions and fewer resources, year after year, our educators, administrators, and support staff continue to provide outstanding educational experience. They should be commended for all the brilliant work they do with such limited resources. Imagine what they could do with more. The operational budget for fiscal year '26 is 3.37%. This modest increase is primarily driven by inflationary pressures and the rise in special education transportation costs, and as I mentioned earlier, are beyond our control. It is also important, important to note that although the overall school department budget increased from fiscal year '25, it actually represents a reduced service budget. Translation, we will be offering less than this current year, even though the total dollar amount increased. The budget being presented tonight has been thoughtfully planned. We collaborated with town leadership to help reduce the financial burden on the town by more than $1.8 million, using school choice funds, competitive grants, and other resolving accounts to close the gap. We are doing everything we can to shield students from the direct impacts of these reductions. We recognize the strain this places on our ability to remain a viable option and fully support our students' needs. If we continue down this path, where each year brings further reductions to programs, staffing, and services, we will lose the very things that make our schools so strong and vibrant. Over time, we risk losing not only students to other districts and schools, but also the confidence of our families and the vitality of our community. The town of Granby is at a crossroads, and we all need to work together. We remain committed to working collaboratively with all stakeholders to find sustainable solutions. Our ultimate goal is to preserve the quality of education our children deserve and ensure Granby Public Schools remains a place where families choose to live, learn, and thrive. Thank you.
The moderator will now call on Mr. Libera for the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm John Libera, speaking on behalf of the Finance Committee. There are some significant financial pressures on Granby for fiscal year 2026, and these pressures are signaling that there are some difficult decisions awaiting our town in the near future. First and foremost is the cost of health care insurance. For fiscal year 2026, Granby's health insurance premium costs will increase by almost $590,000. Next is the net increase in net school spending required compared to the increase in Chapter 70 school aid, charter tuition reimbursement, and school choice revenue. For fiscal year 2026, this increase is over $570,000. Third is the increase of $307,560 in the school transportation budget. These three pressures alone amount to almost $1.5 million more than fiscal year 2026 budget compared to the current fiscal year 2025 budget. Here's what's particularly significant about this amount. This is not like an expenditure on ambulances and dump trucks, which will happen every few years. This is now a built-in increase in Granby's annual operating expenses, a million and a half dollars. Where does Granby expect this money to come from? The companion question is, for how long can Granby expect to afford this? Here's an illustration that shows why the Finance Committee is concerned. In the fit, in the six fiscal years, 2020 through 2025, Granby averaged about $1.9 million in free cash, and an average of a little over a half a million dollars was allocated to operating expenses each year, and the stabilization funds decreased, on average, by about $19,000 a year. But here's what can happen in just one year, and that year is fiscal year 2026. This is what it takes to balance next year's budget. Free cash is about $2.5 million compared to the average of $1.9 million in the past. Almost $1.9 million of that is allocated to operating expenses compared to the average of a half a million dollars or so in past years. And the stabilization funds will decrease by more than $200,000 compared to the past averages of $19,000. What had been a moderate financial slide is suddenly increasing in speed. With the almost $1.5 million built-in budget increases added to the decreases in the stabilization funds, it will be close to impossible to continue to expect the services from Granby that we, the citizens, now enjoy. The Finance Committee does not believe this is a sustainable way for Granby to operate. What's next? It's easy to think of potential solutions. Cut budgets, pass an override bill, construct many new expensive homes, construct buildings for businesses. It's much harder to think of solutions that have a chance of working. The combinations of actions seems plausible, forgetting about how unpalatable some of those pieces might be. Are there any untouchables in the budget? The Finance Committee has gotten tired of saying virtually the same thing every year, and we believe the audience has gotten tired of hearing the Finance Committee say virtually the same thing every year. But the sudden addition of almost $1.5 million to the baseline budget should be a wake-up call for all of us. Doom has not arrived, we cannot predict it, but it sure looks visible. Granby is a small town, is gaining residences and losing population. The remaining population is getting older. Without additional financial resources, it will be impossible to provide the current level of services, never mind those available in larger towns and cities. We cannot pretend otherwise. The only solutions that the Finance Committee can offer within its purview are recommending passing overrides and cutting budgets. Everyone knows the only departments that can offer up any significant savings are the schools, police and dispatch, fire and ambulance, highway, and public buildings. Everyone should also know that cutting those budgets is a political question, requiring an agreement on the fundamental nature of the town. This is not a simple financial exercise to be handed over to the Finance Committee. Better solutions have to originate from and be evaluated by a more inclusive group, and it should happen much sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. The moderator will now call on Dave DeRozier to present the motion under Article 20.
I move the town vote to enact Chapter 25 of the Town of Granby General Bylaws entitled "Stormwater Management," for the purpose of regulating illicit connections and discharges into Granby Storm drain system and to regulate stormwater runoff from new development and redevelopment projects. This is necessary to protect, maintain, and enhance public safety, health, general welfare of the citizens, as well as the quality of groundwater and surface water bodies of Granby. Along with associated regulations, the purpose of the bylaws to bring Granby into compliance with the state and federal requirements relating to stormwater discharges, particularly its U.S. EPA National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, municipal storm, separate storm sewer system, MS4, permit, a copy of which is on file with the town.
Second? And I'll have a discussion?
This, can I, this article is to create a, a new town bylaw, as required by the U.S. EPA, in order to be in compliance with state and federal regulations relating to stormwater discharges. We are currently under a consent decree with the U.S. EPA, we have to have this done by June 30th of this year. This authorizes the Select Board to create regulations to be in compliance with our current permit. We should have done this in 2000, we just kept kicking the can down the road, it failed when we tried to do the bylaw revisions then.
Any questions? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. So, we are now doing the budget motion. I will recognize John Libera to present the motion under Article 21, Item 1.
Just standing, just standing. This is Mike Walker, thank you. Mood: The town vote to raise, appropriate, or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expense of the town, including debt and interest, for the ensuing year and to carry out any vote passed under this article.
Read on with the one.
Okay. Item 1, School Department. Personal services, $8,303,645. Expenses, $849,765. Total, $9,153,410.
Second? And discussion? Come on up. Come on up.
Rich Demeracki, Bachelor Street. I'd like to know why we only have one set of numbers here that says Budget. I guess it's 2026. I mean, these numbers are meaningless unless you have something to compare them to. Last year, we had three separate columns here. This year, it just says Budget. How do we know whether it's an increase or decrease?
It's in the booklet.
Who prepared this?
It's in the booklet.
So, it's in your booklet?
It's in the booklet. It starts. If you have the booklet, it's in there. All of it.
You want to say that?
No.
Rich, if you have the green handout, the booklet they handed out, it is in there. Actually, for all the ones that are coming up, it shows the past two years and the current year.
That's what we didn't get.
I just have a quick question. LaFleur, Chickaby Street.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Say your name again.
LaFleur, Chickaby Street. I understand, a lot of handouts, but I didn't get these pre-seven o'clock meeting. Are these available to me online to prepare myself before the meeting to see that, oh, geez, you know, last time they had, you know, there's a book that has the three columns with the three-year projections, and then there's a handout that just shows what's needed? So, I just want to get acclimated.
Yep. Hold on.
Can't say anything about the past, but I can say in the future, that's what we're aiming for. We're redoing the website, and the Communication Committee that we've got planned is going to be very busy.
I knew you were on that mark.
We didn't get one.
Any further question or any questions on Item 1? In order for the school department's budget to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. For the rest of the budget, we will read them in blocks of four. I'll second the block, and then we will allow questions on any of the four items in that block and then vote on that block. So, the moderator now calls on Mr. Libera to present the motions for Items 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Item 2, same motion. School Department, Transportation: $1,465,510. Item 3, same motion. Moderator. Salary: $300. Expenses: $2,685. Total: $2,985. Item 4, same motion. Selectment. Personal Services: $274,803. Total: $2,985. Item 4, same motion. Selectment. Personal Services: $274,803. Expenses: $212,650. Capital Outlay: $16,546. Item 5, same motion. Finance Committee. Expenses: $2,150.
Can I have a second? Are there any questions on Items 2, 3, 4, or 5? Come on forward, Elaine, and then we'll take you after, Elaine.
LaFleur, Chickaby Street. Item number 2, Transportation, over $300,000 difference from last year. Enrollment's up that much, or is this special needs? What would that consist of? Do you want to answer that?
Oh, you need permission?
Yeah.
Sure, we can get that answered, but Mr. Dorman needs permission by town meeting to allow him to talk, so can I have a motion for that? And a second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Come on up, Mr. Dorman. Oh, no, you can stay there. That's fine.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, the increase reflects capturing the actual costs better than we had in the past two years. We were under budget for our special ed transportation, and that's where those costs are increasing for this upcoming fiscal year, but it is much more in line of our actual expenses for FY '24 and FY '25. So, it will show us less of an increase. We anticipate less of an increase for FY '27.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman.
Come on up, Terry.
Terry Johnson, 98 Bachelor Street. My question also is on transportation. I happened to be outside on voting day when the buses were picking up the kids at the high school, and I can't... You had four to six kids on each of those big buses. Can we do something better than that to decrease that? That was very discouraging to see that.
So, the number of riders is calculated by our enrollment, and there are times when, particularly during the athletic season, that we have a lot of our students or student athletes who are staying after school and not riding at home but are riding the bus to school. So, and we are up for a new bus contract next year. It goes out to bid. We'll take a look at enrollment for the number of buses that we need to operate for FY '27.
How many kids usually ride the bus on a normal, without athletics? Because of four to six kids, that was very discouraging to see that.
Very few, if any, buses actually will have four to six kids on any regular run. We don't... Our buses aren't that light in travelers on any normal day.
Any further questions? In order for the item number 2 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 2 passes by a majority. All those in favor of Item 3, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 3 passes by a majority. All those in favor of Item 4, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 4 passes by a majority. All those in favor of Item 5, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 5 passes by a majority. The moderator now calls on Mr. Libera for Items 6, 7, 8, and 9.
Item 6, same motion. Town Accountant. Personal Services: $46,526. Expenses: $79,043. Total: $125,569. Item 7, same motion. Assessors. Salary: $13,272. Personal Services: $49,055. Expenses: $34,700. Total: $97,027. Item 8, same motion. Town Treasurer. Salary: $59,641. Expenses: $12,800. Total: $72,441. Item 9, same motion. Tax Collector. Salary: $58,562. Personal Services: $32,865. Expenses: $24,074. Total: $115,501.
Second? Any questions on Items 6, 7, 8, or 9? Come on forward, Elaine.
Chickaby Street, LaFleur. Just to be consistent, and I just had an off-the-record discussion with Kathy Leonard because she works in the office. When I don't see a salary, I can't make a financial decision on an article. I want to know why some salaries are omitted and/or they're under personal services. I find it very interesting, Motion Number 6, or Article 6, from 2024 to 2026, an increase of 16K. On an average, and I held a high-level position, I was lucky if I got an 8% increase. So, I find it interesting that 16,000 added to a one-year, within a year salary is pretty awesome. Can anybody explain maybe just a typo or proofreading, but there's a lot of salaries missing? And I need to know those salaries because it makes up the budget. And I unfortunately have too much budget experience, so this scares me.
I think salaries are for elected officials. And the personal services are for the people who work in the departments.
Does that answer your question, Elaine? Can you repeat that, Mr. Libera?
I believe that salaries are what's paid to elected officials, and the personal services covers all the salaries of the people who work in the departments.
Okay. So, I don't want to beat a dead horse, trust me, but if we go back to Article Number 6, we're saying here that his salary was $46,000 for fiscal 2026.
Personal services, all we're voting on is personal services, $46,526 for the compensation of personal services. There's no elected position for Town Accountant, so there are no salaries that are listed.
So, it's not important to know what someone makes in our town that I'm paying close to $10,000 a year in taxes? I mean, I think there should be no transparencies. Everything should be disclosed. Personal services, if that personal services makes up of six people, I can totally do the math. But if the personal services add up to just one person and it's 80 grand, I'm going to be intrigued as to why it's so much and why is there such a big increase from prior year 16,000? I know I'm analyzing it. I'm sorry. It's who I am. And I just retired, so I have nothing to do all day. So, I... It's just, I know personally, and I know Lynn probably doesn't want to hear this from me, but I managed millions of dollars for years for a union, and I was the sole responsible person, and I know I'm going off, for that money. I had to account for every penny, and even if it was a minus one cent. So, I feel very strongly about this quaint little town that I moved here because I loved it so much and it reminded me of where I grew up, that I need to know where the money's going. I mean, I couldn't go through a Board of Trustees and say, "Oh, yeah, $6 million. Where's it going?" Ah, I don't know. It's going somewhere. You know, I needed to be held accountable for every bloody dime, and this frustrates me to no extent.
Thank you. Any other comment on any of the Items 6, 7, 8, or 9? In order for these items to pass, each one must pass by a majority, so all in favor of Item 6, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 6 passes by a majority. All those in favor of Item 7? Thank you. All those opposed? Item 7 passes by a majority. All those in favor of Item 8, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 8 passes by a majority, and all in favor of Item 9? Thank you. Any opposed? Item 9 passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. Libera to present the Items 10, 11, 12, and 13.
Item 10, same motion. Personnel Board. Expenses: $500. Item 11, same motion. Town Clerk. Salary: $68,765. Personal Services: $49,777. Expenses: $3,455. Capital Outlay: $5,000. Total: $126,997. Item 12, same motion. Board of Registars. Personal Services: $2,000. Expenses: $33,350. Total: $35,350. Item 13, same motion. Planner and Conservation Agent. Personal Services: $80,000. Expenses: $1,900. Total: $81,900.
Second? Any question on Items 10, 11, 12, or 13? Come on up to him, Mike.
Barb Aldrich, Aldrich Street. And on Item 13, my question is, the Conservation Commission, I didn't see listed as one that was kind of admitted, and I kind of thought they came under the Board of Health, which I did see listed, but this says Planner/Conservation Agent, and it's not elected, so I'm wondering why Planner and Conservation Agent are put together.
I'll take a shot. Do you know something? You might know more than me.
That is usually when we contract out with, was it Pioneer Valley? Planning Commission. Thank you, Mark. That's what that is. So, that's the Planner and Conservation Agent. We usually contract them out.
Any other questions on those items? Come on up.
[inaudible 18:58, Bachelor Street, and for the sake of people, nobody knows the answer to this.
May I lean into the microphone, Mr. Leonard?
Item 11, can you tell us what the capital outlay of $5,000 is?
Part of the problem is that we are... Tammy just started as Town Administrator. Our previous Town Administrator prepared much of this, so that's why we don't have a lot of good answers. Otherwise, he would be going through the budget, and he would be able to answer all those things very specifically.
So, the $5,000 there, that would be based off of what the previous Town Clerk submitted for their annual needs to run their office. So, whatever that was submitted at the time.
So, my question was for Article 13, or Number 13, for the Planner/Conservation Agent. That was something that we had put out for our job, so it's not for a Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, for contracting with them through the Planning Board, or so to speak, something like that. That was supposed to be a job that we hired someone from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to come in and bring us grants. So, is that what that position is still going to be used for? Because that's what it was originally intended for. So, the Planner/Conservation Agent, the $80,000 for Personnel Services, that was originally put on there two years ago to hire someone to help us get... was originally put on there two years ago to hire someone to help us get grants for the town. So, we put it out, we had an applicant, he withdrew, and now he works with the planning board, and he stayed with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So, is that what that is in there for? Because he currently works for the planning board, so that should be a separate amount of money for him. So, this was supposed to be a position for a planner, conservation agent, to help us get grants for the town.
Any comments?
That's the money that's being budgeted for, uh, personal services, that, again, from my understanding is, is the, when we contract out for certain things with PB, Pioneer Valley, um, Planning Commission on that, so that's the personal services. We didn't hire anybody at the time, so that's, that would have been the, that particular piece.
I do have clarification from Kathy on it, so Ken Comia is being paid out of that personal services amount, and Dave Desalat, who is the conservation agent, is also being paid out of that money. So, I got the answer, thank you.
Madam Moderator. On the item 11 for the town clerk, uh, on our more detailed budget sheet, um, the capital outlay of $5,000 is listed as moving storage cabinets.
Thank you. Did you hear that, Mr. Leonard? Any other questions? Each of these items must pass by a majority, all those in favor of item 10, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 10 passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 11, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 11 passes by a majority. All those in favor of item 12, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 12 passes by a majority. And all those in favor of item 13, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 13 passes by a majority. The moderator calls on Mr. Libera for items 14 through 17.
Item 14, same motion, Board of Appeals. Expenses, $2,090. Item 15, same motion, Public Buildings. Personal Services, $243,964. Expenses, $795,447. Capital Outlay, $44,222. Total, $1,083,633. Item 16, same motion, Police Department. Personal Services, $1,421,864. Expenses, $77,190. Capital Outlay, $23,916. Total, $1,522,970. Item 17, same motion, Dispatch. Personal Services, $320,679. Expenses, $73,236. Total, $393,915.
Second, any, uh, questions on items 14, 15, 16, or 17? Come on up. Well, I know you can be loud, but you have to, you have to have the microphone for GCAM.
A simple question, I hope.
Can I have your name and address, please?
Leonard Yekir, Ferry Hill Road. How many public buildings do we have?
They're thinking.
Start naming them. There's the Town Hall. There's the Carnegie.
There's a lot of smoke up here, people are thinking hard.
Ballpark, the fire, fire, uh, police complex. Library.
This was a harder question than that. Jeremy, would you like to answer that question? Come on up.
Jeremy Carrier, Two Philip Circle, Building Supervisor. So, instead of announcing, like, how many we have, I'd actually like to actually just state off, if I may, which properties we do, so that we get a better understanding of what the costs are. So, for that, we start at the Council on Aging and the Town Offices on West State Street, then we go to the Safety Complex. We have currently the Annex that we do not own, but we maintain, uh, the property and the lawns. We'll do the old library, which is known as the Carnegie Building. The new library, uh, we do as well. We do the Highway Department and its property around it. We will then also do the Safety Complex. We also take care of Brown Ellison Park, and we take care of Dufresne Park as well. So, not only do we have to maintain most of the physical property as far as the buildings go, but actually the grounds that go with it, so that's why you see the cost.
Thank you.
Thank you, I just wanted to get a sense of what things cost per property, really.
And of course, West Street Building.
I'm looking at, uh, about 15 or 16 properties.
10, 10. 10 properties. COA Safety Complex, the Annex, the Carnegie, the library, the Highway Department, Brown Ellison Park, Dufresne Park, and the West Street Building.
Thank you.
We don't, uh, the town does not maintain the school, that's maintained by the school. Does the town maintain the cemetery? Come on up, sure. You, you need to come to a microphone. Can you come to a microphone, please?
Um, I, I was just, there are properties in town that the town, somebody mows, somebody puts a flag up, and I hope it's illuminated, I haven't actually looked on Burnett Road, so there's other properties, not buildings. This is specifically buildings, because you mentioned the parks, like, which have buildings.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry, Aldrich, Aldrich Street.
Do you want to answer that?
There's eight buildings, you have the two schools, the, uh, old library, new library, the, um, Senior Center, Council on Aging, uh, the Safety Center, the Highway Department, and the West Street Building.
All right, so seeing no more questions. Hopefully that one was answered. In order for items 14, 15, 16, and 17 to pass, each must pass by a majority, all those in favor of 14, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 14 passes by a majority. All those in favor of item 15? Thank you. All those opposed? Item 15 passes by a majority. All those in favor of item 16, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 16 passes by a majority, and all those in favor of 17, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 17 passes by a majority. The moderator calls on Mr. Libera for items 18 through 21.
Item 18, same motion, Fire Department. Personal Services, $796,580. Expenses, $69,850. Capital Outlay, $70,400. Total, $936,830. Item 19, same motion, Inspections Department. Personal Services, $108,080. Expenses, $29,362. Total, $137,442. Item 20, same motion, Preventative Inspections, Board of Health. Personal Services, $14,635. Expenses, $4,140. Total, $18,775. Item 21, same motion, Sealer of Weights and Measures. Expenses, $3,000.
Second, any discussion on items eight, uh, seven, 18, 19, 20, and 21? Each one of these has to pass by a majority, all those in favor of 18, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? 18 passes by a majority. All those in favor of 19, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 19 passes by a majority. All those in favor of item 20, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 20 passes by a majority, and all those in favor of item 21, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 21 passes by a majority. The moderator calls on Mr. Libera to present items 22 through 25.
Item 22, same motion, Emergency Management Expenses, $10,996. Item 23, same motion, Highway Department. Personal Services, $514,553. Expenses, $101,650. Maintenance of Roads, $382,500. Total, $998,703. Item 24, same motion, Snow and Ice Control. Personal Services, $86,322. Expenses, $59,000. Maintenance of Roads, $130,000. Capital, $20,000. Total, $295,322. Item 25, same motion, Cemetery. Personal Services, $35,595. Expenses, $5,112. Total, $40,707.
Second, any questions on items 22 through 25? In order for these items to pass, they must pass by a majority, all those in favor, please raise your cards for item 22. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 22 passes unanimously. Item 23, please raise your cards if you're in favor. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 23 passes by a majority. All those in favor of item 24, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 24 passes by a majority, and all those in favor of item 25, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 25 passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Libera for items 26 through 29.
Item 26, same motion, Board of Health. Salary, $3,426. Personal Services, $47,527. Expenses, $24,686. Total, $75,639. Item 27, same motion, Council on Aging. Personal Services, $111,289. Expenses, $5,600. Total, $116,889. Item 28, same motion, Senior Lunch Program. Personal Services, $21,406. Item 29, same motion, Veteran Services. Expenses, $24,000. Uh, that's the total, $24,000.
Second, any discussion on 26 through 29? In order for those items to pass, they all must pass by a majority, so all in favor of 26, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? 26 passes by a majority. All those in favor of item 27, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 27 passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 28, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 28 passes unanimously. And all those in favor of item 29, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 29 passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Libera for items 30 through 33.
Item 30, same motion, Public Library. Personal Services, $192,669. Expenses, $63,806. Less a grant and aid of $22,416. Net expenses being $41,390. Total, $234,059. Item 31, same motion, Historical Commission. Expenses, $250. Item 32, same motion, Retirement of Debt. The principal on permanent debt, $690,400. Item 33, same motion, Interest, $406,866.
Second, any questions or discussion on items 30 through 33? Come on up. Can you please stand?
Melissa Rickson, South Street. I just want to say that I think our public library should be more funded, that there are more services that they could be offering if they had more funds, such as mobile printing, Wi-Fi hotspots, more programs, and the amount that we are giving the library isn't enough, and perhaps they could keep some of that grant aid for themselves to choose at points throughout the year, um, and we could fund them a little better, um, just out of our town budget, and let them keep some of the grant for other things.
Thank you. Elaine?
LaFleur, Chickaby Street. And I know Mrs. Snowpack can back me up on this. Um, we have a lovely library, I get to take my grands there, um, we have library cards, it's awesome. You raised a lot of money for that library. You worked really hard, am I right? You reached out to the townspeople, and a beautiful building was built. Enough said. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All these items have to pass by a majority, so all those in favor of item 30, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 30 passes by a majority. All those in favor of item 31, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 31 passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 32, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 32 passes unanimously, and all those in favor of item 33, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thirty-three passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Labera to present the motions of the items thirty-four through thirty-seven.
Item thirty-four, same motion. Casualty and Liability Insurance, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Item thirty-five, same motion. County Retirement, one million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. Item thirty-six, same motion. Workers' Compensation, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Item thirty-seven, same motion. Unemployment Compensation, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and one dollars.
Second? Any discussion on items thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, or thirty-seven? Come on to a mic.
Quick question, could you?
Can I have your name, please, and your address?
Stephanie Chapco, one twenty-one, Taylor. And my question is, what is county retirement at this amount of money?
What is county retirement?
That is the amount of money the town pays into the Hampshire County Retirement Fund. They pay in based on the employee's salary, so that's paid in every year to the retirement fund.
I think it's the actual payments. I think, Madam Moderator, I think it's the actual, I think it's the actual retirement payments. I think it's the actual retirement payments.
Yeah, where that comes from.
Money for the retirement payments.
The money for the retirement payments, yeah. It goes through them. Yeah.
In order for these items to pass, each must pass by a majority, so all those in favor of item thirty-four, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item thirty-four passes unanimously. All those in favor of item thirty-five, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item thirty-five passes unanimously. All those in favor of item thirty-six, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item thirty-six passes unanimously, and all those in favor of item thirty-seven, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thirty-seven passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Labera to present the items thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
Item thirty-eight, same motion. Group Health and Life Insurance, two million, six hundred and two thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. Item thirty-nine, same motion. Reserve Fund, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Total budget there is twenty-three million, six hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Second? Any questions on item thirty-eight or thirty-nine? Come on up.
Mary Ann Munger, Twelve Smith Avenue. Is the group health and life insurance, is that, are we part of a county plan, or do we have a plan just for the town? What kind of a plan is it?
We're, we're a county.
County, yeah.
A county plan. One interesting thing about this is that the plan itself has a fund for trying to smooth out increases in health insurance. And last year, for, let us say for this current fiscal year that we're in right now, they basically used up a whole lot of money from that fund in order to keep the health insurance costs down. But they don't no longer have that amount of money in the fund. So this year, it's basically like two years of catch-up to get to the fund, which is why it's such an incredible increase, but it's really what the cost is for the health insurance for the town employees.
LaFleur, Chicagbee Street. I think it's my last question. I know too much about health insurance. Way too much. My, I have a statement and then a question. Right now, the marketplace for 2025, 2026, the guidelines, the medical marketplace and the guidelines from the Department of Insurance for fully insured, and I'm correct by saying we are fully insured here in the town of Granby, our employees, we do not have a self-funded plan. Can somebody confirm that for me? Because the rules are very different. If we are fully insured, where the employer pays a portion and the employee pays a portion, we are fully insured. Self-insured is when you pay as a municipality or a union, claims and claims only. There's no premiums. The Department of Insurance is seeing and promoting fourteen percent increases in healthcare premiums. Last year, eight was the average norm. It's doubled, and it's going to continue to double, because there's so many different types of treatments, such as gene therapy, and just to name a few, that are, one, one person can incur over a million dollars a year in gene therapy treatment. And I know I wouldn't turn down my child ever having to get it. I would do whatever. Roll the pennies in the jar. My question is, just, that's a fact, and I could even share the periodical with you. Just got it the other day. Do we have a committee that looks at insurance? Do we, how often do we do a due diligence? How often do we go out to bid? Do we always have at least three top bidders to do a comparison? I would love to show you how to do one, and it's amazing the amount of money you can save.
Kathy Leonard, one sixty-eight, Bachelor Street. We belong to the Hampshire County Retirement. They're the ones who do this. We go through them. We don't have a choice.
The GIC? So they bill you?
It is like a GIC. They, they, they take, they represent many different agencies throughout the county, and they put it out to bid, and they get the best rates.
So do you have a say? Have you ever thought about going independently? You might save some money.
Independently, I don't think we'd do well, because by group insurance, the more people that they insure, the better rates they're going to get.
You have over a hundred lives?
What's that?
Do you have over a hundred lives you're insuring?
Probably thousands in the county.
Okay. You'll make, you'll, there's changes that can be made. There's so many options out there, it's crazy. Thank you for letting me give you a little. Come on down.
Lisa Vitralius, Sixth Common Street. John Labera, could you explain whether that fund was something we're in control of, or is it state money that helped defray in the last two years the premium, this cost for the town? And number two, at what point, if, if it's controlled by GIC, at what point do you start to make hard but difficult choices about the extent of coverage versus what you can afford to pay? Thank you.
Can you answer that?
I didn't hear the question, but. I didn't hear the question, but the Finance Committee has no operational responsibilities, and I don't know.
I didn't hear completely the question.
The question was, John said that the last two years, it looks like a good job, because the last two years, there was some sort of slush fund that helped mitigate the line item in the budget for health insurance. And now that fund is all used up, so it looks like a big unabated amount this year. And so like next year, will it also be as big with its average increase, or will there be some sort of fund to help mitigate it?
The Finance, again, Finance Committee has, has no operational responsibilities or authority over anything in town. So what I'm telling you is just what we have heard. And what we heard was that last year, the health insurance cost for the individual cities and towns and the county was held down because the fund had a lot of excess money left over, that they accumulate a surplus purposely, for the purpose, to try to smooth out the increases in health insurance, which are charged to the cities and towns. And we were told that last year, they used a lot of that money to hold the health insurance costs down tremendously. Well, you know, once you use a fund, you use a fund. So this year, they really had to make up for last year holding it very, very low, and whatever the actual health insurance costs were, I think we wound up with an eighteen percent increase in health insurance for this year.
Who manages or maintains that fund? Is that GIC, or, or the insurers, or the pool of insurers, or?
Hampshire County Insurance Trust. In order for these two items to pass, each must pass by a majority. So all those in favor of item thirty-eight, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thirty-eight passes unanimously, and all those in favor of item thirty-nine, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? I'm sorry, was that an opposed? Item thirty-nine passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article twenty-two.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the Capital Equipment Need Stabilization Fund, two hundred thousand and four hundred dollars, for the purpose of reducing the funding from tax levy for the fiscal year 2026 appropriations.
Second? Any questions or comments?
This article is just to cover the debt services purchases that were approved by the Capital Improvement Committee in prior years. So the bills, the bills are due.
The motion under Article twenty-two must pass by a majority, so all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Article twenty-two passes by a majority. The moderator calls on Mr.
I believe because stabilization requires two thirds vote.
No, no, the law changed for. The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article twenty-three.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash, one million, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, fifty dollars and eighteen cents, for the purpose of reducing the funding from tax levy for the fiscal year twenty thousand, twenty twenty-six appropriations.
Second? Any discussion?
This article is used for free cash, reduce our tax levy.
In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Article twenty-three passes by a majority. The moderator calls on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article twenty-four.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account twenty-four, one twenty-two, five eight oh one, oh one three, bond premiums to be applied to ten thousand dollars, ten thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents, for the purpose of reducing the funding from tax levy for the fiscal year 2026 appropriations.
Second? Any discussion?
When the town borrowed for the East Meadow Building Project, when the bids came in, there was a bond premium. Per Department of Revenue Regulations, this premium must be amortized over the life of the loan to reduce the amount to be raised by debt exclusion, and if I told you I understood what that meant, I would be lying. If you have a question, Mr. Nally would be glad to answer it, I think.
Are there any questions? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under Article twenty-four passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article twenty-five.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to assess the amounts raised and appropriated under these articles and warrants on the estates and personal property of the town of Granby.
Second?
This article allows the assessors to issue tax bills to the taxpayers in Granby.
Any questions? In order for the motion under Article twenty-five to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under Article twenty-five passes unanimously. The moderator now calls for a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting. Can I have a second? All those in favor, please raise your cards.
No, I'm against.
Thank you. The meeting's now over.